So what is it? Which of the numbers?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-seven.
What, where's the legal analysis side on?
There's no legal analysis. It's, yeah, so Dave can explain after.
State of historical.
Okay. All right. So we will move twenty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Public comment. Come on down.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Bronck. This morning, Commissioner Duncan mentioned that Shoshone County had the buses, the public transit system. After the meeting, I was able to join in a phone call with Commissioner Jeff Zimmerman, District Three of Shoshone County. He confirmed that they inherited a bus system, three buses, that they don't want it, and they're looking out for it. And they currently are providing thirty thousand dollars for trade. Just thought I'd add that for the public information.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. I'll take a motion on the meeting minutes.
Sure. I move that we approve items one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Consent calendar.
I move that we approve items three through seventeen.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. And payables?
I move that we approve the payables for the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-third in 2025 in the amount of eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Okay, on to business. First item, number nineteen, bid award HVAC equipment, justice building Apollo Mechanical Building and Grounds, and Director Jeff Bowler, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This item is for the HVAC equipment for the old, the existing justice building. On May thirteenth, bids were received. We received two bids from Apollo Mechanical and TRM Services. Apollo Mechanical was the lowest responsive bid, and we recommend that the bid be awarded with the bid alternate one, so the base bid and bid alternate one for the total amount of five hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars. And then, just as a formality, there was four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars assigned in the FY twenty-five budget for this project. And during the fund balance meeting earlier in May, we talked about allocating two hundred thousand dollars more. So while that was approved by the Commissioners to put into basically the bucket, it's not formally assigned to that project. So we need that two hundred thousand dollars formally signed from fund balance to that project.
Can we do that when you bring the contract forward?
I believe we can.
Okay.
Okay. I'll take a motion for the bid award.
I move that we award the bid for the HVAC equipment for the justice building with Apollo Mechanical.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up.
And that does include the ad alternate, which will be in the contract.
Next up is item twenty, bid award coroner remodel, Geno Construction with Building and Grounds, and Director Bowler, please.
Okay. Also, on May thirteenth, the BOCC received RFQ statements from interested companies to be part of the CMGC. So that means it's a construction manager, general contractor. Under that type of award, we are selecting a firm to be the, to help us in the design phase, to value engineer the project during the design phase, and that will lead us to a guaranteed maximum price that we will present at a later point. So there were specifications outlined in the proposal, and we would rank each firm. And Geno was the overall highest rated firm with three of four raters, having them as the number one rated firm. I would say, just for the record, that Core Construction called me today and was questioning the methodology that I used to rate Geno as the number one rated firm, because they said, based off of overall total number of scores, they were the highest rated firm. But I would, I would argue that three out of the four raters had Geno as, either tied as the highest or the highest. And I was talking with Dave prior to the meeting as well, and I think he agreed with me. It basically says in the RFQ that we'll provide a ranked list of service providers. I feel like that is a ranked list, you know, because in theory, somebody could kind of sabotage that. Or everybody uses a, you know, different method of rating. And so when you take their highest rated firm, regardless of how their methodology of scoring, we had them, three out of the four raters had Geno as highest. And it was very close. I would say we had really four very qualified companies. I think any one of these companies would have done a fine job with that. And because it was very close in that, you know, with the ratings, I also saw an opinion from the architect. And, you know, based off of their experience with Geno, being a local company, they felt most comfortable and would recommend Geno, Geno Construction as well. So we recommend the approval for, of the CMGC to Geno Construction.
Thank you. Questions?
I'm sorry, you go ahead.
I just have one question. I just want to make sure this is clear. This is just for, to design it out so we can get an accurate quote for construction?
Yes, there's two phases to this. So we will, we'll, we'll, in the next couple of weeks, we'll meet with Geno, and we'll bring a design phase contract. So that'll be a smaller portion of a contract for the design services of it, and then that will lead us towards a guaranteed maximum price. So there's, there's two more opportunities to approve pricing. One will be the design phase that we'll use with this firm that is approved. And then the second will be the actual, the contract price, once we get to that guaranteed maximum price.
Okay, because we do have an estimate of what we think this is going to cost.
Yes, and that's what we're, you know, designing towards, is that estimate. So, you know, that's our, that's our end goal, you know, unless they come with us and say, hey, you know, that is way out of line, you know, and here's why. We bring that to you and say, hey, you know, this is why we feel like it's out of line. I also feel like we've put several different items into that design of it, because this is a phased autopsy lab, that, you know, we could do one or two coolers. We could do two or three autopsy stations. So, you know, I think there's some room in that design to work within that budget, and, you know, that is the goal. Unless we find something that is just, you know, blatant, that, you know, we'll come and have that conversation and say, do we want to do this, or do we not?
Okay, thank you. I'll take a motion.
I move that we award the bid for the coroner remodel, next design phase to Geno Construction.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item twenty-one. This is a contract for the coroner remodel with H two A Architects and Building and Grounds, and Director Bowler, again.
Yep, okay. So the other portion of what we've been talking about with this contract is, we've currently engaged with H two A Architects. We spent nine thousand dollars that the board previously approved several months ago for the concept design. The next phase will be to go to the actual full contract, and so they have presented their proposal to us for a hundred and nine thousand dollars, a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred dollars. I would put, where's my number on that, four thousand five hundred dollars in reimbursables in that, and so.
Bring that closer to you.
Again, does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're requesting four thousand five hundred dollars in reimbursables. That's typical with an architect contract, so that is for plans that we might do. We typically pay the travel for the architects to go out to meetings, and any, just kind of little unforeseen that the architects would bill as, as reimbursables. So for a total of a hundred nine thousand, five hundred dollars. And that would be for the design of that. Like I said, we would bring the TMGC portion of that as well back at a later date, but this will keep us moving forward with that project.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the contract for the coroner remodel with H two A Architects.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item twenty-two, board approval request, order beam seating, modern office courtroom lobbies within, in the justice building, building and grounds, Director Bowler.
Okay. So this is for the new justice building project. I mentioned it briefly this morning, but this is for the beam seating. It's kind of airport-style seating that would bolt down to the floor. That is for the lobbies outside of the courtrooms in the new justice building. If you recall, several months back, we looked at several different options for that. We first looked at the idea of maybe doing the pew, wooden-style pew bench seating that you have in the courtrooms. But that came back very, very expensive, and we felt like this was a good compromise to go with this beam seating at a much lower price point. So this is the formal proposal for your approval, so that we can place that order and get those coming.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the order of the beam seating with modern office for our courtroom lobbies in the justice building expansion.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item twenty-four, board approval request pursuant to policy nine thirty, May 2025 consolidated election services invoice payment with K and H Integrated Print Solutions in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and ten cents, and we have Asa Gray.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Asa Gray Elections Manager, for the record. Before you today is a, let's see if I can, if it'll like me today. Before you today is a request to pay K and H twenty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and ten cents for the costs of absentee ballot mailing and printing, along with assembly and regular encounter and test ballot printing for our May 2025 election. Obviously, I've got any questions you may have.
Questions? Motion?
Why are you sitting and not standing for questions? That's getting, thank you, thank you for a job well done, Asa. I move that we approve the contract for purchase of remittance. Oh, nope, I'm on the wrong one. Board approval request pursuant to the policy nine thirty for the May 2025 consolidated election services to pay that invoice with K and H Integrated Print Solutions.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item twenty-five, approved contract for purchase of remittance scanner and software license. This is with AQ two, AQ U R I T, AQ two embrace software license and maintenance agreement with the Treasurer's Office and Jill Smith.
Hi, Jill Smith, Chief Deputy Treasurer, for the record. We are requesting that you sign a contract approving the purchase of a scanner and the software licenses that come with it. This scanner will allow us to process sixty checks and state, stubs per minute. The advantage to this is that we can then get the money to the bank much more quickly. As an example, this year, we had some issues with the mail. Our phones were extremely busy. We didn't finish posting payments until the end of January, which, in theory, is a month's worth of interest we're not collecting on those dollars. So for a relatively low price, we can get those payments posted more quickly. There are still payments that will have to be hand-posted because they require analysis, but for the easy payment, this will help us get them in sooner, which saves the county money by earning the county money.
Thank you. Questions?
I just have two questions, Chief Deputy Smith. Number one, are you able to absorb the yearly fee into your budget going forward? Because I see that there's not an FY twenty-six request.
We did. It's, it, the FY twenty-six request is in our, I forget the fund number, and Arrow can probably share it for me, but it's the software licenses.
Okay, and then.
Twenty-five, just under twenty-five hundred dollars a year going forward.
Okay, and then.
And yes, we did absorb it because we reduced elsewhere.
Perfect, thank you. And then, will this be up and running for the June twentieth collection?
I'm not sure. We're, with our, our tax provider, tax software provider, it looks like we can be up and running. Until the contract's signed, we can't have the conversations with US banks. So I think it will be up and running, but I can't guarantee it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the contract for the purchase of remittance scanner and software license with AQ T, AQ U R I T.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item twenty-eight, board approval request. These are parcels with zero value. The Treasurer and Deputy Smith, again.
Chief Deputy Treasurer Jill Smith, for the record.
Chief Deputy, excuse me.
Fine. So there were a dozen parcels that we've identified that were part of the BOE process. And for whatever reason, instead of the valuation being adjusted as per the BOE order, the value in the tax and assessment software was set at zero. The loss to the county in tax dollars is just under two hundred thousand dollars. Well, that's district-wide. The county's portion is, you know, thirty percent of that. Oh, so sorry. So we're putting this in front of the board, because when the initial bills went out in December, this valuation error had not been identified. And all of these people got zero, well, not zero dollar, but five seventy-four for Aqua Fur and, you know, eighty-eight dollars for solid waste. One of these accounts is the, is campground. They didn't agree with the BOE decision. They moved forward and went to district court and got a further reduction. As an example, their taxes for tax, property tax year 2024 would be thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and fifty-six cents. Two of the parcels out of these twelve, three are homeowner occupied, two, the mortgage company is paying the taxes. So when the mortgage company pulled the data file in December, there were no taxes due. For these two parcels, potentially, if we correct this valuation error through a, I'm not going to call it, it's a tax correction rather than a tax cancellation, because there's no tax cancel, we could end up blowing up their monthly payments, because tax dollars weren't accounted for. So we're asking for board guidance, because we can't decide to knowingly not collect these taxes. But also, we are not going to fix this problem with, and, and, and it will, we'll have to send these parcels through on a one-by-one basis. But wanted your direction first. We're not going to suddenly send a thirty-seven thousand dollar bill to someone who, you know, their, their December bill was de minimis. So we need your guidance.
Does anyone have any questions or thoughts on this? I mean, I do a little bit, but.
Well, you go first.
Well, first of all, I mean, people know they have to pay their property taxes, right? So when they get a property tax bill that says zero, okay, that is an error. That is not a, all of a sudden, you won the lottery and your property doesn't get charged taxes. So if people don't, you know, say something, granted, it will not get caught until it gets caught, and then they have to pay for it. So I would argue that we either pro-rate what is owed over the balance of the year, or pro-rate what is owed over the next twelve months, and then their tax rate or monthly payment would drop to the normal amount after that. Clearly, we made a mistake, but that doesn't, you know, become a windfall for others.
I, I don't disagree. We just didn't want to arbitrarily move forward without having informed the board. And again, we'll have to send them through, I think. We've got the BOE decision that reduced their taxes from what the initial, or reduced the value from what the initial value had been. And maybe we can just work from that, but I didn't, our office did not want to move forward, especially with the campground that followed through with district court. And they have their bill from December that shows nothing due, and now we're sending them a thirty-seven thousand dollar tax bill. We can absolutely waive interest and penalties and give them twelve months to pay without interest and penalties, whatever the board recommends.
Well, that sounds pretty reasonable. Obviously, you know, it's our mistake, so we can't penalize people by not meeting a deadline. Is there some statutory direction on this?
Yes. So Ms. Smith, I think that we should schedule a BOE meeting, and then we can handle it officially in that capacity. And then that way, we can have a little bit more thoughts on this. I do like the idea, obviously, of allowing them to make monthly payments instead of hitting them all at once. So I, I think if we handle it through there, would probably be better. But I, I agree with Chair Matarri that this is not a windfall. This is something that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to solve this anyhow during this meeting, but I do agree that we should have some options, have them reviewed legally, and then we can present them to the property owners.
I agree.
So.
Okay.
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 All right. Thank you. Moving on to item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item twenty-nine, temp employment contract 2025, express employment professionals with human resources. And I, well, I had test puts on here.
Yep, so test pipes for the record.
Sorry.
That's okay. Before you, I have the express employment professionals contract that's been updated. We're looking for approval. I'll point out that they have reduced the percentage of markup for their associate pay, so that's really great news. They have not made any increases to the fees as well, so it's just an updated contract for approval.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the temporary employment contract for 2025 with express employment professionals.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item thirty, grant award number AIP zero six three for FY 2025. Federal Aviation Administration grant in the amount of four hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars, with a cash match from Fund Thirty of thirteen thousand, seventy-eight dollars and eleven cents. And Kim Stevenson, are you on the telephone?
I am, Commissioners. Kim Stevenson with the airport, for the record. We are submitting for approval for our FY 25 grant, AIP sixty-three. The projects involved in this grant are the Taxiway Alpha Rehab Project, Phase One, which is a preliminary design, the aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle, acquiring that, and Phase One design on that as well. And then the last for the Taxiway Charlie Project, which is to reconstruct runway six two four Mauser, which is the medium intensity approach lighting system. The amount of the award from the FAA is four hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars, and that is at ninety-five percent. That would leave thirteen thousand, seventy-eight dollars and eleven cents from each of the county and the Idaho Transportation Department Division of Aeronautics as match funding. Reminding the Commissioners, this is also an electric, electronic signature that should be in email to Chairman Matarri, and then it has to go through prosecuting attorney, and we need to have that back to the FAA no later than the thirtieth, thirtieth.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve grant award AIP zero six three for FY 25 with FAA in the amount of four hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars, cash match from Fund Thirty, thirteen thousand, seventy-eight dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item thirty-one, grant amendment number AIP zero five eight. This is an amendment request with the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, four hundred eighty dollars, with a cash match from Fund Thirty of five thousand, four hundred seventy-one dollars and eleven cents. And Kim Stevenson, again.
Kim Stevenson, again, for the record. This is a request to the FAA for a grant amendment for AIP fifty-eight, which was our runway six two four rehab project, was an FY twenty-three airport improvement grant. This amendment request is due to the additional asphalt and hauling required as extra delamination of the runway was discovered as the project proceeded. The FAA entertains amendments once the determination of the final project costs have been calculated. Unfortunately, we had to wait for a flight check. Unfortunately, we had to wait for a flight check procedure and then invoicing of that flight check to find out the final cost. So it seems like it's a little late in the game, but this is our process. The request to the FAA is for $98,480. It is a 90% award, or request, excuse me, with a 5% each cash match from Fund 30 and from the ITD Division of Aeronautics in the amount of $5,471.11.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the Grant Amendment, AIP 58, which is a request to the FAA in the amount of $98,480, with the county portion from Fund 30, $5,471.11.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries.
If I may make a comment, Randy Falcon, for the record. I just wanted to point out and clarify, this is an amendment request. It's not an actual amendment. So no additional match or grant amendments will be booked until the approved amendment is received back from the FAA and then approved by the board. So.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can do items 32 and 33 together. This is a lease termination, AAL-2000-090. End of term, Eugene Soper with the Airport, and then the ground lease, AAL-2025-900. Airport lease document with the Soper Living Trust. And Kim Stevenson, please.
Kim Stevenson, again, for the record. This lease, we've been working with the lessee for about nine months. To, they wanted to lease some additional land that is across a taxi lane from where their current lease is. And so we were working on doing this. When the lease base term expired, the renewal option would start. Unfortunately, in that time, Mr. Soper passed away, and legal suggested that we do it this way, as opposed to any other form of it. So we are requesting determination of the lease with Eugene Soper. And then the new lease, the ground lease with Soper Living Trust, has additional square footage in it. The, the new legal is attached. And the lease rate resets itself to the current, the current lease rate for the, the land.
Thank you.
So we're asking for your approval on both of those, please.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the lease termination, AAL-2000-090, and that we approve ground lease, AAL-2025-900 with Soper Living Trust.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matarri?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, public comment. Hearing none, 2:31. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.